To bring them, so I-
Okay, good evening, folks. Welcome. Calling to order the regular meeting for Gladstone City Council, November 10, 2015. It's now 6:34 PM. Jolene, can you- call, roll call, please.
Uh, Counselor Sickman?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Turner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Here. Can you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
It ever does.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think Jolene- We've reached out and we've kinda talked to you. If you guys haven't been here before, if you wanna speak about any issue or a regular agenda item, there's three or five by seven cards, yellow cards at the podium. If you bring them up to Jolene, fill them out, and she'll call your name when the appropriate time's there. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, yes, I would like to introduce, before we get started, Carolyn Gray, our new accounting manager, who doesn't look like she's here, so I guess I won't introduce her-
Oh.
-right away. Other than that, I don't have any corrections or additions to.
Okay, at this time, we got any cards, Jolene, for business from the audience at this time?
We have a number of them, so in no particular order, would Mr. Mark Meek come up to the front? Yes?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. My name is Mark Meek, and I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to introduce myself to you. I'm gonna be running for state representative for this district, House District 40, and which encompasses City Gladstone and Oregon City, and also Johnson City and Jennings Lodge. So I just wanted to let you know that I would love to be available to discuss any concerns that you may have at the state level. I know you've done some great work with passing of the recent bond measure and hopefully build up your infrastructure here. I think that's great news, and it was great work, so congratulations on everything you did to do that. I'm very happy with leadership here, so it's very nice to meet you. And I don't have a big agenda, just to give you a couple seconds about my background. I'm currently on the Clackamas County Planning Commission, and we're working on the marijuana initiative and zoning for all the properties outside of the cities and unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm the chair of that commission, and I'm also on the Economic Development Commission. So I'm paying attention to some of the issues that will affect commerce and growth in our area, and wanna be a voice and an ear to help, you know, if I get elected, and hopefully with some support, be able to be an ear and a voice for you in Salem. And also, I'm a business owner, small business owner, realtor for 20 years, small business owner, and a member of the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce and the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. So I know I've known some folks that are part of the Business Alliance here and all of the chambers, so just wanted to introduce myself, Mark Meek, and I live in Gladstone, but not in Gladstone proper, so I have not, have never been able to be involved with your, with the city business, but definitely appreciate all the work you've done for us, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First off, as you-
No, no, we were gonna-
Yep, I'm sorry.
Thanks, thank you.
When you do come up to talk to Counsel, state your name and address for the record. I would appreciate that. And second off, I'd like to introduce Carolyn Gray, our new accounting manager. Carolyn, you'd like to come up and-
Right on.
I don't think I've met you, so-
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
For sure.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Carolyn.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, could Mindy Garlington come up?
Members of the council, now that the election is over, I'd like to share a few thoughts as you begin to move forward in planning our much-needed new civic buildings. My concern is the green space known as the Gladstone Nature Trail. My family and I moved here 25 years ago after my husband had finished his honorable tenure military enlistment. We had two kids, and we heard that Gladstone was the best school district that we could find in Clackamas County. We bought a house on Berkeley Street, introduced ourselves to the neighbors, and thus began our career here at Gladstone. Sometime in 1994, 1995, the Albertsons Corporation made public the fact they wanted to build a store on the corners of Oatfield and Webster Roads. At the time, our daughter Eileen was enrolled at Cracks Burger, and I thought, well, not in my neighborhood. I quickly found a group that was of the same mindset as myself, and I hoped that by joining them, I could make this nightmare stop. There were meetings, many phone calls, miles of walking house to house to inform those that wanted more information. In the end, the proposed development was stopped. It was a long six months. I don't recall all the logistics, but this community was thrilled at the end result. Please do not dismiss the work that so many people have put into saving this green space by selling it off. There were so many people that put so much time and effort into stopping what we truly believed would be a horrible encroachment into our small town. And what we gained, although it needed some serious attention a few years back, was a beautiful space to look at and enjoy. Green is a good thing. Remember that once a property is gone, we can't get it back. The trees will be gone, the quiet will be gone, and the hard work that the citizens of this community put in, which for some was up to a year, will be dismissed as though it never mattered. We are not the old administration. We are simply the taxpaying neighbors that care. We are your neighbors. I hope that we can work together and find a way around selling off the Gladstone Nature Trail. Respectfully, Mindy Garlington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Mark Murphy.
Hello, my name is Mark Murphy, and good evening, council members and Mayor. I live at 839 Risley Avenue, in the, uh, let's see, River Run Apartments, and I'm always coming out of my driveway apartment and coming down to Gloucester, and there's a, there's a business on the, on the, on the west north corner that has, has all kinds of cars in their gravel driveway there. They seem to, in the last month or two, they, they filled their whole complex there with cars. I'm not sure what kind of business they have. Might be a detail business or something like that, but anyways, they seem to be parking on both sides of the streets there, and I'd like to see maybe a no parking on one side of the street, so two cars can pass coming in and going out on Risley, and that's, that's all I have.
May I-
What street are they parking on specifically? What, what street is it on Risley?
Risley and Gloucester, on the northeast, northwest corner.
Yeah, they park on both sides of the street there on Risley.
Right, so- It's owned by the Honda dealership. The cars are, and that property is now owned by-
Well, there's, I think there's a different, different company in that, in that one corner lot.
They sold, they sold that to the Honda dealership earlier this year.
Oh, okay.
So, but I took a note of-
I know it was up in jail for a long time. I've only lived here about two and a half years, but during, like, the summer, with the baseball going on, there's, it's a, it's a nightmare going through there then, too. So I was, I was thinking about earlier, earlier in the summer, coming down here and asking on one side of the street be no parking, just because all the, all the cars are parked there. Sometimes they're not parked all the way to the curb, or, you know, just makes it hard. Might be a, might be a, like, an accident happened right there because of not enough room.
If I may, I'm on a liaison with the Traffic Safety Committee. Have you talked with the police department about this concern?
Uh, not, not that subject, but I've talked to, you know, the speed is 25 through Gladstone and all over, and I've, I've talked to them about me. I respect the law, so I'm going 25, and people were tailgating me all the way up to where am I going?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll definitely bring it up to the committee's attention.
Okay, next is Audrey Daras.
Good evening, I'm Audrey Daras. I live at 410 West Exeter Street, and I'm, I'm Aleah Feinberg, and we are coming as representatives from Cracks Burger Middle School. We've been working on a project that goes beyond the classroom and the school to connect our community and help support a cause. We're putting together a nonprofit art show and community talent gathering. All the proceeds are going to be going towards local homeless shelters and providing the homeless community with necessities for the harsh winter months. We've teamed up with this organization called PARE. They're a shelter in Portland that has a lot to do with homeless youth and art, and they've provided us with 13 pieces of art to be put on display, but we're going to need more. We're looking for people in the community to donate their art to us and to put on display and sell at our event. The second part of our community is a talent show. We're putting people in Gladstone and beyond to show off their talents. On January 8th, and auditions will be on December 1st and 3rd at Gladstone High School. What we're asking you to do is support us and hang out flyers in your local businesses and donate to our project, Hope Nation. We're not asking for money, but other things, like socks and sweaters, and just your support and advertisement. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Do you have some of your flyers with you?
Yeah.
Um, not yet, but we should, uh, you can-
Okay.
I think that'd be something that would be great to put up here at City Hall.
You have a bulletin board.
Okay, the last person is Mr. Bill Rigdon.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Rigdon. I live at 6715 Devonshire Drive, and my wife and I, we've lived in Gladstone ever since 1971, so we've seen a lot of changes and stuff going on. We love this city. But my concern is, is that my wife and I are snowbirds, and we leave for the south and follow the geese and the ducks south, and we spend about six months on the road going places. And I usually have my water shut off at the house, so that if anything happens in the house, if there are any problems, and then also, they stop the billing me for the water service. And then I ask them, well, what about the sewer? And they said, well, the city doesn't have any valves to shut off the sewer water, so that they can't stop the sewage charges. So I'm paying full service for the sewer, and I've gone six months, and what I think isn't quite fair, because I'm not even home to flush a toilet, so I'm not creating any sewage at all. And then I heard that low-income people are allowed to pay half price, but yet they're using the full service of the sewer. So I think, not only myself being just the only snowbird in Gladstone here, is that I think it'd be equitable, you know, if we could not have to pay that sewer while we're gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more person, Glenda Sheer.
My name is Glenda Sheer, and I reside at 1525 Columbia Avenue. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, and we celebrate Veterans Day for honoring the service that people give on behalf of creating our country and our right to vote and our right to participate in a free and unencumbered election. And I have to say that I'm really disappointed with the process that took place with the Measure 3-471. I emailed, there was some false information that was on the city website about the, how Gladstone Nature Trail was depicted, and people turn to the website to find accurate information. They expect that in a city that you would have accurate information about your community, that as a city you would provide that. On October 27th, I emailed Mayor Jacobellus, and I stated the problem that I was opposed to Measure 3-471, and I feel that there was some information that was specifically misleading on our website. And I was really taken aback, I guess, 'cause I voted for some of you who are up there, including you, Mayor. And I, your response to that was very disappointing. Your response was, we've already addressed that internally. Unfortunately, the confusion is already there. Changing the website might help, but I can already hear the detractors saying we were trying to cover our butts. You're an elected official, and your purpose is not to be concerned with what people think of you. Your concern should be on providing accurate information to the voters. And I am gravely disappointed that it seems to me, from my perspective as a voter and as a resident in Gladstone, that you and the city council were more interested in getting a yes vote than providing voters with accurate information that would allow them to make an accurate choice. And I'm gravely disappointed in that. It saddens me, because I think about the sacrifice that many Americans have given to allow for this process, and it feels like with this response that you're more concerned about what the opinion is than providing truthful and accurate information. And I do believe, Counselor Johnson, that you knew precisely what you were stating in that, and that it wasn't a mistake that you put that in bold, that no parklands would be sold. Because I do believe that if you had put it before the voters and said, we are planning on selling and disclosing, we are planning on selling Gladstone Nature Trail, that many voters would not have voted for that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing further?
No.
Okay. Move down to the consent agenda. We have three items: approval of amendments, October 27, 2015 meeting, approval of monthly projects, and approval of payment of October claims.
I will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it. Okay, motion was made by Counselor Sickman to approve the consent agenda, was seconded by Counselor Mercero. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda's been passed, approved, rather. And now we have moved down to presentations. Item number four, presentation from Carlotta Colette from Metro.
She has a check there.
Hey!
That's a big check. But first, I just wanted to hand out a couple of things in terms of background and tell you about a project that you've kind of inspired us to do, if I might. Before I give you the money, I wanted to, first of all, thank you for applying, because I love Gladstone, and for the folks in the audience who don't know, this is a community planning and development grant for basically Main Street, Portland Avenue here in Gladstone, and the, we have a review committee of people from the real estate industry and developers and people, not Metro. We don't make the decisions. We get recommendations, and then we generally approve them, but the recommendations come from this committee, and they loved your proposal, they loved your project. And that inspired us, Metro, to think more about the whole McLaughlin Corridor from Wellamette Falls up to the Milwaukee North Industrial Area, just below the Tacoma Light Rail Station, as a unit. So one of the things I handed out to you is that we are creating a pilot project that we're calling the McLaughlin Investment Area, and it's about really nurturing economic development in this entire corridor, putting together the money we're investing in Gladstone. Milwaukee got a similar grant, Oregon City, and the other flyer I handed out has the map inside of the company you are in, who also got grants. And really, looking at this whole corridor from the perspective of what are the brownfields that might be available here that we could help get some money and help clean up, identify them, help clean them up, put them back into productivity, maybe put jobs in them. In most cases, it would be jobs and not housing in what had been a brownfield. So you inspired us, we're putting it together. We're going with Oregon City, Milwaukee, Clackamas County, and we probably will ask for a letter of support from you to EPA to ask them for the biggest grant, the award, which is $600,000 to do an area-wide assessment of brownfields. So I'm very excited to be able to give you this check. I like big checks. I love giving away big checks. For those of you in the back, this is a check for $150,700 from Metro to the city of Gladstone in recognition of your downtown planning efforts, so. I shouldn't have brought a photographer.
I know.
Congratulations, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
I have a few more of these, I'll put them back for anyone who wants copies.
Four checks.
I was gonna say ten.
Four checks.
You're right, I have $150,000 for everybody.
Can I take that to the bank and write it?
Somebody's up for reelection.
That's my last golf tournament winnings.
Happy. All right, thank you again, appreciate it. Okay, item number five, Rick Glick, Gladstone Attorney for Tri-City Representation.
Rick? In October, council asked staff to review attorneys that might be able to represent Gladstone in the matters and concerns of our relationship with Tri-City Service District. Staff has selected Mr. Glick, and would like to introduce him right now, Davis Wright and Tremaine. Mr. Glick, take it away.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Rick Glick. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am a partner at the Portland Law Firm, Davis Wright Tremaine, where I've practiced energy, water, and environmental law, a lot of that for municipalities. So I represent cities all across the state. I've been doing that for over 30 years, and have a fair amount of experience in pulling together intergovernmental agreements, trying to find ways by which local governments can work together as opposed to, opposed to each other, and to work through whatever the regulatory process might be to get to the end result that we all would like to have. My own background is I started my practice as a staff attorney for the State Water Resources Control Board in California, in Sacramento, and I'm coming to Portland in 1979, went to work for the city attorney's office in Portland. I represented the Water Bureau, Environmental Services, Hydroelectric Power, and the Energy Office. And in private practice, I've continued pretty much in the same vein, doing the same kinds of work, again, a lot of times for public bodies. What I've been asked to do is to begin looking at the relationship between the two sewer districts that serve Clackamas County, CCSD Number One, and TCSD, and the relationship with the county. And the idea there is, from what I understand, the growth in the county is occurring in places other than Gladstone at the moment, and yet major improvements are being planned to serve the, the growth in these other areas. And the question becomes, how does that get paid for, and what services are allocated among the various communities within the county? So that's what I will be looking at. I'm not here tonight to offer advice. That would be something that I recommend would occur under executive session in a future meeting, where we could talk about these issues candidly and have some confidentiality in how we do that. With that, have we taken any questions you might have?
I was thinking that we might set ourselves up for December executive session about Tri-Cities. I think a lot of things will come to fruition during the month of November, and I would love any questions you have or anything we can ask Mr. Glick to take a look at, so with that.
Are you thinking of before or after the 10th, which is the regional meeting?
Whatever our first meeting date would be in December, and I'm looking, it looks like it's gonna be on 8th.
8th.
Yep.
Okay, so that would be before the next-
Which would be perfect, yes.
Right, I was thinking the same thing.
For, for council's information, Ross and I did chat with Mr. Glick on the phone the other day, and we went into some depth on these issues, so I think that it would be a good idea to continue that conversation. December, that'd be an excellent time, two days before that regional meeting.
From skin arts to wall art.
It's not me.
Hopefully, we'll have some new wall art here in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything?
Well, welcome.
Well, I was gonna ask, so this is just our relationship with Tri-City, not necessarily Tri-City's relationship with the county, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the way that we have hired Mr. Glick. It's Gladstone and our relationship with Tri-City, however, that's probably gonna boil into Tri-City, since we're a third of that organization.
Thank you. Good to meet you, sir.
Thank you.
Rick, thanks.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving down to the regular agenda, item number six, which is the Resolution 1067, Intergovernmental Eight Agreement with Port of Portland Dahl Beach Mitigation-
I have another question.
What?
No, I'm sorry, I was just-
Dahl Beach Mitigation Project. Kind of little background, we've done two, this will be the second public hearing on this matter. We did a work session with the Parks Department back in, I believe it was end of July. This has been posted, signs have been posted down in Meldrum. I saw them down there last couple of days. I'm gonna offer the port to add any additional information or make a short presentation if you want to, to kind of encapsulate or summarize where we're at or what your perspective is on it. And Kelly Madelinski and Lee's, ooh, we're gonna get that.
Gladsky. Thank you. We'll just make a few short comments, since we've given a presentation of the project overall. Again, I'm Kelly Madelinski with the Port of Portland, and behind me is Lisa Gladsky also with the Port of Portland. I'm the lead overall for this project, and for, I believe you have them in hand as well with your packages, but in the back for the audience, there's handouts associated with the project that show graphics and illustrations of the location and what would be done, big picture overall. And so again, just a few minutes here to say that in short, the proposal includes two restoration sites at Meldrum Park. One is the removal of the bulkhead and stabilizing and restoring that shoreline. The other part of it is the partial removal of that Dahl Beach parking lot asphalt, as well as restoration of the shoreline. That's the big picture of the overall project. These restoration sites are part of a package, both proposed by the city and the port, designed to really be a partnership to meet the city priorities as well as the port's need for to satisfy mitigation requirement we had related to a cleanup at our Terminal 4 back in 2008. In terms of the city's priorities, by removing the bulkhead and restoring the shoreline, the city will tackle a public safety hazard associated with that bulkhead, as well as protect per top property, as well as improve the habitat for the fish and wildlife there. Through this process and doing some preliminary assessments, which again, I believe is all available now on the website at the city in terms of all the studies and preliminary designs associated with those two areas, we've found that the fix isn't, is expensive, if you will, and based on our understanding, the funding for a mechanism of the removal of that bulkhead or fix of that is pretty limited. And so again, this is a partnership, meeting the city's needs as well as the port's needs. As the mayor had indicated, we had briefed the city council and held a public hearing back in October of the 13th, as well as meeting with the Park and Recreational Board, which at that time had supported the project overall in their October 26 meeting. Again, all the information is at hand. In terms of the, the terms of the partnership or proposal is that the port would take on all the responsibility associated with the project, including all costs associated with that. The estimated construction costs of both of those sites are estimated at $460,000 without contingency. In addition of that, the- In addition of that, the port would pay for the direct staff time associated with the project, as well as a site access fee, which is an additional $35,000. Again, in return, the city would allow access for us to do those projects onsite, as well as support any of the permitting applications associated with that. And again, keep those areas in line with the park itself, as well as the intended use of a habitat area for the fish. In closing, I believe that the restoration project offers the city a unique opportunity to address these areas, especially the bulkhead, while also optimizing the parking spaces for the recreational access, at no cost to the city. Again, I want to thank the, we want to thank the city council and their staff for holding these public hearings on Doll Beach, and we welcome the feedback from the council and the public on this, and we'd be happy to address any questions as the night goes on.
Do you ask questions, mayor? Just a second. Any additions or stuff you want to add there?
The staff report I wrote up did not have a staff recommendation in it. City managers are usually loathe to put recommendations in like that because they come back to get you, but I will tell you that staff has talked about this, and staff is in favor of this project. So I want to make that clear as the public hearing goes on.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to open up the public hearing now, and then do your questions after when we do deliberations? Does that make sense? To you? Okay. Why don't we do that? Okay, so I'll, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing and offer for testimony for anyone that wants to testify on this topic. And Jolene, you have some cards for us?
I do. Mr. Les Poole.
Les Poole, Gladstone resident. I'm on the planning commission, but I'm not here as a planning commissioner. I'm also the liaison between the planning commission and the Parks Board. But I just have some thoughts that came out in the Parks meeting, and concerns about what are, where is our security for the future? I'm not opposed to the project. I understand it started as a smaller project, and then the opportunity to do the bulkhead, which I think is the biggest issue, came along. I personally, just in studying the river and looking at the water flow, think removing the bulkhead is a real winner. I'm not so sure that the original scope of the project, the parking lot removal area, which I realize doesn't meet, does not meet what we're trying to do in the region for restoration and for shoreline, you know, habitat protection. But I'm concerned that the more we affect that, the more we're opening a can of worms. So I've just got some concerns about what guarantees do we have after the first flood comes? What guarantees do we have that we're not gonna end up with much smaller park when all is said and done? Mr. Herman mentioned that we're losing a lot of trees down there, so I'm not saying no to this project. I don't know enough about this project to be comfortable with what happens in the future. And the last thing I'd want to have happen is to get all the work done, and then it gets swept downstream five, six, eight years down the road. So again, this is just my own thoughts, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The next person is Pete Bay?
Tracy.
Tracy, sorry.
Did I get it right?
This is the first chance I've had to come up and speak in front of the council. Hi, mayor. My name's Pete Tracy, live at 530 Stone Hill, been a fisherman and one of our local river rats. I graduated at Gladstone. My kids have graduated at Gladstone, and my grandkids are now going to Gladstone, and all come from a big fishing background. I wasn't here in July, and I'm coming into this somewhat uneducated on what the whole project entails, but as Jake had said, our mayor had said that, I saw the sign when I got back from Alaska down there, and that's what got me in here to talk about it. But as following the last resident, we had enough egg on our face from this Lake Oswego thing, when they put the bulkhead in to rebuild a new water system for Lake Oswego, and we watched what the hydraulics of the river did to that bridge. I met my wife on that bridge in the eighth grade. I jumped off that bridge. I swam underneath it. I fished hundreds of hours underneath it, and to watch it just wash away, you know, the changing of any river, I have the, the other young man that was sitting here, he said he was a snowbird. He got to go to Arizona. Well, I'm a gooey duck. I go, during the summer, I go to Alaska to fish, and then I enjoy this for fall, winter, and spring. Whenever we horse around with Mother Nature, and you know, how powerful these rivers are, it's gonna affect something downriver. And if you're not all down there looking, where I spent hundreds of hours fishing with me, my children, and my grandkids, we're already having mass changes. We stopped dredging the Clackamas River years ago when the gravel pit, that gravel bar is now sloughed down to the mouth. Where I see the proposed project, what's to say that that gravel bar just isn't gonna come up against that parking lot? So I'm really concerned about where the smaller part of the project on the parking lot started coming, because I'm down there. I'm a fisherman, I use that parking lot. I have casted a rod off that parking lot in the last 12 months. We do get flooded, we do have to wash the mud off it, but that parking lot is steadfast since I was a kid. I was there when that bulkhead launched its last boat in 1977-ish. I think we launched a 50-foot sailboat off that bulkhead. If you aren't aware, that used to be a manufacturing site for large boats. I just gotta say, there's a huge back Eddie that is right below the bulkhead. I was talking with somebody young, I was flying down with them, and I'd heard, and I'd heard something about this. If we change that, it's gonna change, it's gonna change that back Eddie, which is gonna change the trees that are sloughing off what we refer to as the garden hole. This is natural progression of the river, and I think if we step in and do something, maybe it's just best left alone. It's not a, not a big hazard, but yet, you know, maybe it's left all alone. So am I done? That's all the minutes I get? Dang, I could keep going.
You're close to the end.
I could keep going forever, but with your consideration, I would make sure that we double and triple look what our effects are from this river, because the upper parking lot is steadfast forever. That bulkhead, we lost it in the flood, I was there for that as well, so.
Thank you, sir.
Watch what we change. Thank you.
One question, if I may. When was the lot put in, that lower part that they're talking about replacing?
Well, I don't, this is the upper part. They're actually looking up at the upper parking lot at the mouth of Clackamas, where we sit and cast our bank rods. That's the upper parking lot. So I don't think it's affecting the lower parking lot below the bulkhead. Are you planning on changing that?
No, no, we're talking about where it's on, at the mouth of the Clackamas.
That's up at the mouth.
Right.
That's the Doll Beach. And you know where we all put our surf rods, and we back our trucks up there?
Right.
I think that's what we're planning on changing for a parking lot, which, the river could so easily sweep away whatever we did. We've already made a mistake at the Clackamas Park Boat Ramp that now is obsolete, and that's because of the gravel bar that's sloughing down on us. That gravel bar is encroaching that parking lot, and if you ever want to go out my boat, it's more than under the Oregon City Bridge, and you can see how dramatic that gravel bars came. It has slid three or 400 yards. So it's dramatic.
So do you remember when the lot, that lot was?
Established?
Yeah.
No, because when I was a kid, we were able to four-wheel drive from there up to the Portland Avenue Bridge. So all that engineered fill where the, behind the bowling alley, that was all a four-wheel drive trail all the way through. It's that lot, or a parking lot, has always been there. There's another old face I see from Meldrum Park. Is the only other one I, back in the corner, and I hope he gets to speak on it too, and sorry for taking all the time.
No, no, no. Appreciate your time.
I will get more educated with your website, and I'll reach out and make contact with you, so.
Thanks, Pete.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next person is Tammy Stempel.
Hello, I wasn't gonna speak, but I'm going to anyway, like I always do. Tammy Stempel, 6960 Winfield Court. I'm on the planning commission, but I'm not here for the planning commission. I own a environmental consulting and engineering firm, so these type of mitigation projects are not something that's unfamiliar to me. We deal with them all the time. Having been a part of this conversation, when this whole project first came up, and being able to help craft it to include projects that we desperately need, has been really important, and this is the best possible deal that we could get. Working with the Port of Portland is the best possible deal. They're footing the bill. This project is a very expensive project. I keep hearing certain counselors ask, well, what are we getting out of this? We are getting an amazing project at no cost to us. How much more could you get? How much more could you want? The other piece that I keep hearing is, well, we're surrounded by river, what are you gonna expect us to do? We can't, we can't, we don't have the money or the time or the energy to, you know, have to repair the entire river. Well, I have to tell you that what makes us unique in this area is the fact that we have so much river frontage, and it is our responsibility to take care of that asset in any way that we can. And this is one way to start that process. We can't ignore the fact that we're surrounded by water. We have a lot of environmental projects related to the river that are gonna need to be done, and we need to start developing those strategic partnerships that are gonna help us move forward with these projects in the right way. And I know that you guys have a bad taste in your mouth because of the Tiger Lake Oswego Water Partnership. This is not that project. So please put that aside. This is completely different. This is apples to onions. Please, don't even consider that. Look at this, it's a unique, amazing project, and please, please move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's it?
That's it.
At this time, do you guys have anything you want to add? Any answer, any misconceptions or something you want to just come up and have any rebuttal?
I would just add that.
Come here with the mic.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for the comments. It was good to hear those comments. I just wanted to reinforce a few things that, you know, we have done to date a few several studies associated with looking at the fact that it is a river, it is dynamic, and it is evolving and changing. And so we've done that by hiring a series of consultants to look at that, different components of that, for looking at both the upstream and downstream areas of where the projects would be held, and what would happen if we were to remove those materials already. And based on those studies, we feel like, again, and the overall design is going back to a more natural system of what we see upstream and downstream, that it should be stable and work fine moving forward. But again, part of this proposal is that the port would obviously be on the hook for the operation and maintenance and monitoring of those projects as well, and anything that would occur during that time period.
Okay. Thanks. Anything from the staff?
No, sir. We're done.
All right. So why don't we do this, why don't we close the public hearing and move towards the resolution, where we can do our deliberations, and then you guys can call the port back up and ask your questions then. So at this time, I'm closing the public hearing on that subject, and I'm looking for a motion, so we can start talking about the resolution and have some deliberations.
So I think what you're looking for is, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1067.
I will second it to move it into discussion.
Okay, so the motion was made by Counselor McMahon, was seconded by Counselor Sticman. At this time, we'll start our deliberations. We can start in any direction you want. Kim, you want to go first?
I can. I've spent a lot of time combing through this, and I think, I think there's obviously two parts to this project. One of them, part of it, I think, is very important. The other part, I think, I don't think is nearly as important as the other part. A couple of things that I'm concerned about, the last time we talked about this, we was told we had all the information, and this is, you know, just, just go on what you've got, go on what you've got. Since our last meeting, we have had three brand-new reports dated since our last meeting. So we had all the information, now we got a whole bunch more information, and I still don't know if we still have all the information. But I'm not gonna belabor that point, but some of the information in here has brought questions to me. The last report that we just got was the Waterways Consulting, and we're trying to take this back to its original natural habitat, I believe, or something wording similar to that. And I look at pictures that they've given us from 1936. Are we trying to get it back to the 1936 picture? Are we trying to get it back to the 1836 picture? I'm not quite sure, because there's a huge difference over the years between the first picture we've got in 1936, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's what they're trying to accomplish, is what I see in 1936. So I'm not really sure what era we're trying to restore it to. Mr. Tracy mentioned earlier that at one point, there was four-wheel drive trails along there. I don't believe that's probably what we're trying to do, but that was an era for that The report on 6-16, the last paragraph, it should be noticed, noted that regardless of final slope configuration, maintenance and stability of the, some maintenance may be required to maintain the stability of the slope beyond this project. Well, that means, the way I read that is, we're gonna have continued erosion after their five-year maintenance period. So that's just, I don't know that these are questions more than things I'm just pointing out that I've noticed in here. On 6-18, under demolition, it says the piles will be cut below finished grade and covered with soil. In the report, the second report that we got from them, it says they will be completely removed. So one report says we're gonna cut them below grade, one report says we're gonna cut them, cut them off, one report says we'll remove them. I keep seeing on page 618, structural fill as recommended later in this report. Materials generated during demolition of existing improvement should be transported off-site for disposal or stockpiled in areas designated by the owner. I haven't heard that we wanted to stockpile any of this, so I assume it would be transported off-site. On 619, they talk about structural fill again, one, two, two places, and then it has its own separate title, 6.4. On 619, it talks about structural fill. On 621, in this engineer's report, construction observation 7.0, the engineers recommend retaining Hart Krauser, the creator of this report, to monitor construction at the site to confirm the subsurface conditions are consistent with those identified. You know, so they're actually asking for somebody on-site, because they're not really sure what they're gonna have when they open it. They've got.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
You know, so there's certain. You know, so there's certain, they're requesting people on-site, because they're not 100% sure the drilling's, they're not going to find something different, which I understand that. It makes good sense. My point with the engineered fill and the pointing out of this, the city has got, does not have an owner's representative down there. If this was to move forward, is what I would like to see, is I would like to see the support, the port, in their funding, allow us the money for an owner's representative to be on-site to make sure that they are removing what needs to be removed, that they are putting engineered fill in place, and that they're protecting our rights, or our property rights, and doing it the way it should be. And I think it would be as simple as the expenses that they were going to put out if they were going to hire this company to do that, as recommended. It would just be a pass-through to our city where we could hire our own representative to do that. I want to make sure that we're covered with other damages in the park. We've seen a lot of significant damage with heavy equipment moving through on the last project. So I want to make sure that if they're damaging the roads in and out of the park, especially some of that new pavement that we just got with heavy equipment, that that gets addressed and that they're responsible for that. Those are comments I have on the project. The resolution itself, I have a few issues with. I don't know if the city attorney has had a chance to review this or not, because this was not a resolution that we were, it was proposed to us by the port. So I want to make sure that our city attorney looks at it. But I have a few issues with it. On page 6-6, the second-to-last whereas, removing a portion of the lower parking area will provide the city with a reduction of impervious surface and stormwater runoff that can help meet the city's Oregon Department of Environmental Quality stormwater management I look at impervious surfaces throughout the city, which is going to be buildings and parking lots and streets. We're going to remove approximately 16 parking spaces, I believe. I suppose you could really stretch and say that we're improving, but when you figure that on a percentage basis, it's probably several zeros behind the decimal point before the first number. So I don't, I don't know if that's really a statement that we want to put in, something like this. I don't know on the 1, 2, 3, fourth whereas, park infrastructure improvements. I don't know that we're really improving our infrastructure by this project. We may be improving the park, or we may be improving salmon habitat. I'm not saying that we are, but what infrastructure are we really doing it? The last thing I have on this is the final whereas on 6-7, the city of Gladstone will commit through a deed restriction to keeping the use of these sites consistent with the restoration of natural habitat. I'm not sure exactly what all that means. 20 or 30 years ago, I believe, they was pulling all of the logs out of the river and saying, oh, we got to get rid of all these because it's creating heat in the water and it's doing this damage. And if we would have put a deed restriction then that we would keep all the logs out of the river, we would have a problem now because they found, you actually want to put the logs back in the river. It helps keep the water down. It gives your salmonoid habitat to live in. So I'm really concerned about the deed restriction. I would be very interested to see exactly what that deed restriction was, because we don't know what we're going to find 20, 30, 50 years from now. We have deed restrictions in this city that says there will be no alcohol sold in certain parts of the town that are still on the books. So the deed restriction portion really concerns me. I think that's pretty much sums up the information I found.
Tom?
I'm basically in favor of the project. It looks like it's doing some good things for Gladstone. I keep hearing some questions, and regarding the comments that Kim made, Counselor Kim made, as I remember in reading, the engineering, the preliminary engineering is only 30% complete. So I'm sure in an engineering study, 30% is not a whole bunch. So there's going to be some things they find as we go along here. So I think the project's going in the right direction. The one thing I keep reading, though, I do hear in the reports as I read them, that I'm not sure how important that parking area is. And that seems to be one of the things in contention from people. I've got input that gee whiz, we've gone down there and there's only been three cars and two cars or three cars, four cars, not much. But my suspicions are that sometime in the year, there are a heck of a lot more than At this point, I believe I read that you were considering saving eight to 10 spaces. I guess I would prefer 10 versus, my basis of thinking is if we go to eight, it'll be cheaper for you guys than it will be if you go to 10. I would rather see something in the 10 to 12 and/or more, based on what people say. I know the board for the parks had a, it wasn't exactly a split vote, however, a third of the, of the board, of the Parks Board voted against this. So it indicates to me that there is some concern about that parking lot. I wouldn't, like, I wouldn't mind seeing a little bit more thought about saving more of the parking lot. I don't know if the whole thing needs to be saved, but I believe maybe a bit more would help the whole project for Gladstone. The one other item I would like to address is Gladstone hasn't done a whole bunch with a lot of things for a number of years. Now I believe it's starting to happen. And one of the things is we're getting around to all of our master plans and getting a little thing care of. One of the master plans, which is just getting started, I believe the Parks Board disagreed with, agreed with, excuse me, is to get that started. And the funds are a bit short on things, and I wouldn't mind seeing this be, being related to the Parks Board master plan. And it just seems like a natural place to be. So, good work so far. I have to agree, the reports keep coming in. In fact, I just got one of the reports yesterday or day before, and I went through and read that today. But it was made on November 6th, if I remember right. So that's not too long ago. So, anyway, I'd like you to take that in consideration.
I have a question for Mr. Madalinski. I asked this question at the Parks Board, and I didn't get a very good answer, but I'll ask it again. What is the value of this project to the Port of Portland? And I prefaced that question last time I asked by, if you did not do any mitigation at all at Terminal 4, what would the cost be to the Port of Portland?
Yeah, again, higher up, what this is for the port is, is, again, we had done a cleanup action in 2008 out of Terminal 4 where we placed, because we did some activity associated with that, the resource agencies, regulatory agencies required us to move forward and offset that impact by creating habitat associated with that. And so what this does, this project, by removing essentially what we're doing with the bulkhead and removing part of that parking lot, is we're removing the hardscape, if you will, think of it as a very hardscape. We're removing that and again, adding, restoring the shoreline to what it looks like currently if you look upstream of the bulkhead or even for a little bit downstream of that. So that's what the port gets out of that in terms of value. There's no dollar amount associated with this. It's meeting the certain kind of requirements that set forth by the regulatory agencies. So for us, it's both area and also the type of habitat that we have to fit. And with these two projects, that meets our needs.
I think, I think Kelly reinforced, it's a regulatory requirement that we must fulfill. So you can't really put a dollar and cent on that. We, we do meet our regulatory requirements at the Port of Portland and a lot of those.
But somehow you came up with a budget for this project and decided how much you were going to spend. How in the world did you come up with that if there's no value?
Yeah, we, when we approached initially the city, if you recall, the initial proposal was the entire removal of the parking lot, the lower parking lot area. And just by doing that project alone, that would have met our regulatory need. Now, again, we're, at that time, we didn't have a hard, I should say, a harder estimate than we do now with the construction costs associated with this, because we took a hard look because of the bulkhead expense. But based on that, if we were just to do the parking lot, we estimate that the construction cost would be just south of $250,000 associated with that. That would have meant our regulatory need. However, because of the concerns by the city, and the mayor had raised this as well, and the city staff about removing the entire parking lot, we backed, and the priority from the city in terms of the bulkhead, which is the current state, now the costs, as we've said, the construction costs have inflated to at least $460,000 overall. So again, there's no dollar amount associated with that, but the reason the port wanted to, has stuck with this project is because, again, we feel like this is a partnership with the city in terms of meeting their needs and needs as well as our needs, and ultimately satisfies the regulatory agencies.
I would just note, so essentially, the price of the project, the mitigation project, has almost doubled, it's increased by 50%, or doubled, from $250,000 to, if you add the staff compensation and the $20,000 of access, that's four, my numbers are not going to, 480, was that 45?
Yeah.
480, yeah. So it's very, so it's doubled. And typically, I mean, I don't know if this gets to your question, but typically, when you do mitigation associated with a project, it's percentage, like maybe around 20%. We are fast, we have exceeded or are approaching that 20% figure, so where we are right now.
Okay. So the problem that, the problem that our park creates for you is that it has a solid surface, the Dahl Beach parking lot. It's an impermeable surface, is that correct?
Yeah, it has the asphalt as well as the riprap associated with that building up the overall, as well as the bulkhead as well.
So why not replace the surface with a permeable surface?
Well, again, the idea being is to create habitat by removing that hardscape and then again, putting what would be more natural in terms of what you would see in a river like that. So putting something like a pervious asphalt doesn't really meet that need of providing, again, what you would consider natural habitat, such as logs, gravelly cobble rock that you would see up and down the stream or the riverbank.
So when you remove the riprap, are you going to guarantee us that we're not going to have huge erosion problems in our park?
That is the goal here, and this is why, again, we are undertaking the monitoring and the cost of, if anything would go wrong. And that's why, as Councilmember Maresiro, I think I, sorry about that with your name, but Mercer, that's why we've done a lot of studies upfront that may be more early on in terms of the overall design phase of where we're at, because we wanted to ensure that what we were proposing and conducting would not create any future problems.
So there's no guarantee?
There's no, there is no guarantee with anything, but again, based on the, our studies and the assessments we've done to date, we think it's a solid approach associated with both areas.
Having just received it yesterday, I have not had an opportunity to read the report you sent, so I don't, I'd like to dig into it, but there just has not been time.
Sure.
Okay, I don't think I have any more questions, but I do have a couple of comments. Thank you. I'm, I'm concerned on a lot of levels about this project. And one of them is that I believe from personal observation, that the lower parking lot at Dahl Beach is a cherished part of our community. I think it is used, I think it's used a lot more heavily than our reports would indicate. There's some commentary that it's only used by fishermen and only at a very short window of time in the year. I was there even today. I mean, it's a cool day, but it wasn't raining, and I observed many cars. I also observed people out in the, in the pretty daylight taking pictures. And most, all of that activity was in the area that is slated to be removed. I don't see this as a Gladstone problem. Our parks and our parklands are for the use of our residents and are not put here as a mitigation opportunity for an outside agency. I mean, it's just not something that I think is important to us. I am also very concerned about unintended consequences. You start messing around with rivers and all kinds of weird things start to happen. I can't even begin to predict them. I mean, that's part of, part of the problem with that. I'm also concerned about some of the things I've read in the report outside of the Dahl Beach parking lot, in the bulkhead. There's discussion of something described as a dead man, which appears to be a tieback for the original bulkhead. And what will happen if that is exposed, and whether it will need to be mitigated, and whether it may indeed not be holding up the entire bank. It may be, it may be what's keeping that whole thing from falling into the river. But I don't see removing the Dahl Beach parking lot in any way, shape, or form as a priority for this city. And I think that we should seriously consider looking out for the interests of our residents and keep that in mind when we vote. Thank you. Neil?
Thank you. So several questions. One, why was this, as I alluded to earlier, why was this parking lot built in the first place? Does anybody know?
Okay. All right, listen, we've closed the public hearing, rhetorical questions are not going to help.
It's not rhetorical, I want to know. Why did we build, why did we spend money to build it in the first place?
Ask the staff.
Well, I am.
Staff doesn't have an answer for you. I wasn't here then, and I can look it up and find out and get back to you, Counselor, but I can't answer it tonight.
Well, but we're voting tonight. Well, but we're voting tonight.
Well, I, I can't do any better than that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then, from what I understand from the port, we can't separate these, as in, it's, it's a combined bulkhead and parking lot that they can't just take care of the bulkhead, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, another question following up as to, we don't know when the parking lot was built, but when did this idea of removing it come about?
I know that it's been discussed during the year, I know the first discussions were in April, I think, of this year, so I don't know when the idea itself was germinated. I have to do some research on that, too.
I mean, I first heard of it when I first got elected in January.
Okay, okay. So, and then, so what brought it, brought this to light then? Who, who, who thought it was, hey, you know, it needed to be removed?
Don't know the history to that either, Counselor.
Okay. So, on page six dash forty-eight, there's some, some wood structures you're talking, is that, can you describe those as to what they are?
Kelly, you guys might as well just come up and sit down, and yeah, there's no reason to-
So, I'm assuming you're referring to the package of material that was given to you in terms of, and part of the, when you say woody structures or woody logs-
Right, right.
-prevented. So those are meant to be, again, what you would see in a natural system or in a river would be logs, et cetera, up and down a river, and so those are meant to be stationed there to help with, enhance the overall habitat for the fish, the salmon. That is their purpose.
Thank you. Then, then may I ask another question? How often does the river rise to where the lower parking lot is, to where, that you want to remove, in a given year?
Our understand, I, I don't have the specific of, in terms of how many times during the year it's inundated, but it is inundated throughout the wet season as the river rises, if you will, in the-
So, so it's covered months at a time?
Um-
Or, or just maybe one, one or two days when we have a, a major, major rain?
I don't have the specifics in terms of how long it's flooded like that or inundated with the water, but I can get back to you on that.
Well, again, we're supposedly making a decision tonight, and you're asking us to remove it because it's interfering with, with fish habitat, but you're saying that, well, it only, water only goes over that area maybe a couple times a year. And, and those, and those wood structures are going to be exposed, am I right? I mean, they're, they're above, and, and so they're going to be exposed most of the year, most of the time for, so it could be a hazard for, for children, for people in that area. Is that-
Yeah, they-
Is that a possibility?
Those logs would be tied down-
Right, well, I understand-
And, and keep in mind, even though, which we can get you more information, but the overall parking lot itself is what's below what we call the ordinary high water line. So when the river rises in what it's ordinary high level, which is a designation by the state regulatory agencies, et cetera, like Department of State Lands, et cetera, but that means that that line is a demarcation of what the water would normally be at its high point in terms of that. And that's a, a well above, if you will, the current parking lot, and so-
Okay, so, and how far below that line is it?
The, the, in terms of the parking lot, in terms of elevation?
Yeah, because along, because along the north part of that lot is a, a, a rock fence, or, or not fence, but, oh, I'm trying to think, holding back the bank.
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I'm-
No, I'm, I'm looking right now to see what we're, right now, the elevation of that parking lot is roughly at twenty, twenty feet, and the ordinary high water line is roughly at twenty-five feet.
On high water, and how long does it usually stay at high water?
Um, it depends on the season in terms of the flow, et cetera.
So days, weeks, months?
Yes, it could be days, weeks, it just depends. Typically, you'll see it in the spring, if you will, where it crests in terms of its level.
Okay, so like in the last twelve months, how many times did, was it above?
I, I don't have that information on hand.
Okay, then in regards to Terminal Four, what, in layman's terms, what I understand you're saying is, you guys built something at Terminal Four in the river, and now we're having to mitigate it somewhere else, make up for that, and somebody approached somebody to get you guys involved in, and notice that maybe this lot needs to be removed. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I mean, maybe to help clarify that a little bit in terms of our role and how we came involved, when we had this impact and we, we needed to develop a habitat restoration on the Willamette, which is the lower, it was a specific requirement in terms of the area as well, we couldn't necessarily create something in the Columbia, it had to be in the Lower Lamont River, we started to go out to different organizations to say that we were seeking partnerships, if you will, to see if there were interested parties in working with us to develop this kind of project. At that time, we were approached by the company of Falling Springs indicating that there might be some potential with the City of Gladstone. And this project was initially identified to us. That's how we got involved, and then based on that, once the city had provided some feedback associated with the desire of, A, this wasn't a high priority in terms of, the parking lot is a resource to us, but the bulkhead is a priority, that's when we started to get involved and started working with on the city overall in terms of city staff as well as the council.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that overview. One thing that I, I keep mulling over is the, the cost benefit. And there's been talk, as a economics teacher, I, you know, I, I teach cost, you know, cost benefit. And, you know, what's, what's beneficial to me, you know, it's going to be, and one student is different than, to another. And one thing that's been brought up back and forth tonight, last month, back in June, was, you know, how many, you know, how, how much is, or how often is this area used? And, and one thing with, is, you know, lady brought up earlier about, you know, tomorrow's Veterans Day, and we, we have a lot of disabled people, veterans also, that I know use that. And granted, it's not a designated handicapped spot, but there's, there's organizations that build designated handicap spots for our citizens to be able to fish. And here we have basically a natural one that, you know, was built years ago, we don't know when, and we don't know really why, but I'm, you know, it's, it's, it's used a lot, even during storms, people go watch the river rush by from that vantage point. And, which, which plays into kind of our mission and vision statement, we're, we're unique, we have, you know, both rivers, and we are trying to get access to the river for, for people to, to enjoy. And you're, the way I take it is, you're asking us to take some of that away. Because from, one of my questions was, would they be able to drive down like they can on Melton Bar? And then I, I saw in one of the drawings, you got big boulders at the end of the, the drive area along, you know, the asphalt that's going to stay. So people aren't going to be able to drive down into that area. And so I'm, I'm asking that my colleagues turn this down. Because I feel if it, if it affects one person, that, then it affects us all. Good? Uh, let's see here. Yes, thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
I have nothing to say. I'm tired.
Ms. Turner?
Well, I think you guys have covered most of everything that I thought about talking about. I would like to say that you guys put a really nice, comprehensive package together for us, thank you for that. For me to go through it in a short time, it was very, very good information. The, one disappointment I think I do have in talking to some of the local people that do fish and use the area is we're, and I have to include myself, I'm a little disappointed that it wasn't two separate projects. It's voiced as two projects, but it really is one. And I think that if it had been just the bulkhead, there would have been no problem with it. I feel that the parking lot is the bone of contention for everyone. I feel that the two-thirds of the lot going away is, is the real issue because you're taking away the view. If it had left enough where you could still have the view, I mean, a few less parking spots wouldn't have been a big deal. And I think it's all in all a great opportunity for Gladstone to get something done at no cost to the City of Gladstone, and it's been a significant dollar amount. So the only real question I have for you is where the deeded restriction to keep it a natural habitat, is that going to keep individuals from actually being able to use that area, or will it be restricted and marked off as no entry?
Yeah, no, we, we can't obviously, human nature, we can't eliminate human access to that area. What we, as part of the proposal, though, because of the vegetation that we're establishing, et cetera, we would put up signs that says, be careful, this is a natural habitat area limit, you know, in terms of the stomping of that area, especially with plantings of vegetation, et cetera. However, it doesn't prevent those individuals to walking down, especially during the summertime, when people are wanting to get down there more in terms of walking along the, the actual shoreline where the rocks are, et cetera, that will all be there and people will still be able to access that from that standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
I only got a couple of topics on, like Pat. Basically, a couple of things that we kind of at least glossed over so far is the fact of the matter is that as an independent consulting firm, environmental group, basically in black and white says, the bulkhead exacerbates the undermining of that bank. Our own public work supervisor confirms that, basically in the Parks Department hearings and conversations and all throughout this, that basically that bank is eroding, we really shouldn't be using that upper parking lot above the bulkhead because it's undermined, something's got to be done. And to go to your point, Kim, talking about the maintenance to deal with erosion after they do what they do, we're dealing with erosion now, we're going to have to deal with erosion in the future, whether they take the bulkhead out or don't. So the point of the matter is, is that for, for that big of a project, my question is, goes back to the same thing, when we, or how are we going to afford to fix this thing down the road when we're moving with other projects? And it's not going, it won't, it's just not doable. Missing part of this parking lot, although it's a sore subject, we went from taking the whole thing out to saving ten spots, you know, ample enough in my mind, contrary to Counselor Johnson's observations, ample enough to support what, what people want to use it for. Besides the fact that just ten feet up, up that little hill, there's parking lot for, you know, 150 cars. It's not like we're eliminating access to this thing. So those are my points on it. If you wanted to negotiate and work, talk to them about an owner representative, or if you don't trust this group that did the initial study as your owner representative, maybe we can work that in the IGA. But other than that, I really don't have too much more to say about it. So I will ask someone to call for a vote.
For clarification, we're voting on the-
Approval.
Approval of the resolution-
Correct.
Not-
Approval of-
Of the resolution as written.
Correct. So, Jolene, we've finished our deliberations, can you please do a roll call vote on the Resolution 1067?
Counselor Schickman?
No.
Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Mayor Jacob Ellis?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 1067 passed. Regular gender, item number seven.
Thank you all for, that's, that's why I'd appreciate it.
There's no more room for talking, I'm going to move to the main.
That's it?
I think, and I, I know your frustration, I can see your enthusiasm.
1060, uh, item number seven, charter committee, the approval, Russ?
Yes, sir, item number seven, in October, council discussed putting together a charter committee. I put together a staff report for a charter committee creation. Once again, this is up for your conversation, and if you'd like to add something to it or something taken away from it, it was just my first shot at it. It's consistent with other committees that we've put together, so with that, please deliberate.
I like it.
Okay. So, all we're asking Ross is you just to move forward with this, is that what we're looking to do?
I think so, yes. Yeah, I could, I would take a motion to move forward as written. If something comes up and you guys want to change it later, I think you've got that authority.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can I finish reading it first? So, um-
Sorry.
But I, I, you know, it didn't get to me till just tonight. It apparently might have been sent out last week, maybe?
Yes, it was.
But I- Time for, okay. Thank you, sorry about that.
It's all right.
That's okay. Oh, you're good to go.
I'm good, no, sorry.
I've been waiting for something here.
So, okay, no.
All right, so the-
Didn't look for reading.
I had a motion to have the staff move forward on this charter committee approval that was made by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Schickman, all in favor of having to move forward, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, well, I have to bang it, you can move forward on that. Um, item number eight, approval of Tri-City Service District Resolution Sheet.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on November 18th, the Tri-City Advisory Committee will meet. The Tri-City Advisory Committee, once again, is a representative from Westland, a representative from Oregon City, and a representative from Gladstone, as well as a representative from West. The two resolutions that I am proposing as staff for the City of Gladstone, one resolution advises the County Board of Commissioners that we would like to use Tri-City funds to review the differences between a 190 organization and a 451 organization. A 451 organization is how the Tri-Cities Board is currently organized, and it leaves the County Commissioners as the legislative body for that Tri-Cities Advisory Board. A 190 organization basically would let the Tri-Cities Board elect its own legislative body and would be, would be basically a municipal corporation at that point with all the rights and privileges therein. So that's one resolution, and ask the Tri-Cities to hire that attorney to come back and report to Tri-Cities about which way would be best for Tri-Cities. My expectation is, is that County Board of Commissioners will certainly discuss this issue at length. So that is one resolution. So, that is one resolution. The other resolution concerns the Janicki Omni Processor and has to do with having an engineer that is not part of West do an evaluation, an honest evaluation, and return it to Tri-Cities about how that processor may work in relation to the Tri-Cities operation. And also, the Janicki Group asked that if we had a truckload of solids available, don't know any other way to say it, that they would take it, burn it, and begin the DEQ permitting process so that everybody would understand what that means to us. So, those are the two things that are on the second resolution. So, with that is what I'd like to ask is Council's comments, if I'm going in the wrong direction, I still have an opportunity to change these agendas, or to your approval that says, hey, these are two reasonable resolutions and we support, support them. Once again, I'm your representative on this board, so.
Do, do we need a, a motion for, one for each one, or can we just?
Nope. It's your choice. If you like one, you can approve one. If you like both, then approve them both. I think you guys get to make that choice.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was going to make a motion unless you had a question.
Go ahead, make a motion, I'll-
Okay. So, well, I move that we approve both Resolution Sheets and give instructions, you know, to our representative to move forward with this.
I'll second that. Okay, motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Johnson, all in favor of having discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes.
I would, I would say that the, the engineering study is kind of an offshoot from conversations we've had with Janicki Bioenergy, including those at, at our last visit to their plant in Seadrill Lake, Washington, where they did offer to process some of our solids through their machine. The solids in, in the sewage process at Tri-City is actually post anaerobic digester. They're fairly inert. I don't think they have a lot of bugs or anything like that in them at that point. But that's what they would need to start the permitting process with DEQ. And also, I'd kind of as an aside, that Lance Paulson from Oregon City sent an email to Oregon DEQ asking specifically whether incineration was permitted in Oregon sewage incineration. And he got back a very nice email that said it is permissible, got to go through the process. They were, they were offering to do some help and they said it sounded like an interesting project. So, I think this helps to direct the Tri-City Advisory Committee, and I think thereby helping to advise the Board of County Commissioners sitting as the governing body for the Tri-City wastewater district.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions. And this one's for the city attorney. Do you see any problem with these resolutions, particularly the one asking for changing the, from the 451 to the 190?
No, Counselor, I don't see any issue with that. Obviously, this is going to be ultimately at the discretion of the current Board of Tri-Cities, whether they want to move forward with something like that or not. I think it's a logical, logical ask.
The other resolution, down under the proposal, let's see, the first bullet point, the second sentence, staff would return the list of candidates to the Advisory Board for further action. I assume that to be the TCAC?
Well, I, it would be the Tri-City Staff, and Tri-Cities does have a staff according to IGA. So, I'm asking for the Tri-City Staff to return that list of possible candidates who could do this-
To the Advisory Board.
To the Advisory Board.
Which Advisory Board? We've got several and they get confused, and so I just want to make sure if you want that to go back to the TCAC-
Yes.
That maybe that gets spelled out.
That's us, yeah, yeah, okay.
And we aren't calling some, and that was, that was the only thing that I seen.
The Board of County Commissioners and West staff had, I have some communication problems back to Tri-City, so putting that in there, I think, is important.
Yeah. I will, will amend it.
Anything else? Okay, so, we had the motion, it was seconded, we had discussion, there was one amendment made, so we're voting on the, to have them move forward with that amendment in there. All in favor of having-
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Finished.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay.
I think it'll be an interesting meeting. I can't wait to put these on.
Looking forward to it. I think it will be-
I wish I could be there.
And, and to be above board, I spoke with the County, Don Krop, the County Administrator, told him these two resolutions were coming. They've already been sent. I think everybody's probably seen them by now, but it'll be nice to have the weight of this Council behind it. Thank you.
Okay, Item Number Nine, Recommendation from Parks and Recreation Board regarding the RFQs, Request for Qualification for Parks Master Plan.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. In front of you, you guys have some brown paper. One is the Gladstone, it says on the front cover, Request for Qualifications on it. It's the same one that you have in your packet with some modifications. I'd like to go through those first, if I could. Well, actually, let me talk first about how this all came to be. The Parks Board put this RFQ forward, I think it was created by a member of the Planning Commission some time ago, and I think they took it and brought it forward and discussed it and asked me to put it on the Council Agenda. Even though Council doesn't have to approve this document, what you would end up approving is the subsequent contract that would come from whoever would reply to this RFQ and would be evaluated by the Parks Board. I wanted to get this on the agenda though, so you could see it, the changes I've made between the brown sheet of paper and the white stuff of what was sent to you. I have noted with a little arrow, the project date for the RFQ would be between November 2015 and April 2016. I don't think it will take that long, but I just left plenty of time in there. Qualifications due, staff has set a timetable up on page, excuse me, on page five of 10 of the RFQ, which is down at the bottom. So, it will be due in on December 14th. I further ask Jeff Smith, who is our volunteer coordinator for the Fire Department, not necessarily his job description, but Jeff and his background has done quite a bit of project management, and ask him to be the city's Park RFQ Manager, if you will, and he said he would do that, kind of working out a class for him, but he's helping out for the good of the order. So, Jeff is going to be the RFQ Manager for this, this issuing. And then, on page five of 10, you can see that I did modify some Scribner kind of stuff and put Jeff Smith as the email for someone to call. Once again, he doesn't know what he's ta, well, he does know what he's taking on, but anybody that's got a question will call him and he'll then filter it back through me and to the Parks Board as required. So, once again, that's the RFQ that's ready to go out. I guess I would answer any questions you may have on it, and it's more letting you know that it's on its way. Thoughts?
Questions? Thoughts?
Have you seen these before for Parks Master Plans, and does this look similar?
Yeah, I, I think this is great. There's probably two or three groups that do master plans for most of the cities. I contacted Oregon City to see who they used for theirs, which was recent, and they gave me three names. Jeff is going to make sure they get a copy of this RFQ. You know, his process is going to let them ask questions and, you know, come back with answers, so I think it'll be a good process.
West Lynn also has a very nice looking master, Parks Master Plan. It'd be nice to know who they, who did theirs and maybe include them in the mailing as well.
Yep, we'll contact them and make sure they, whoever did it gets a copy of the RFQ.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I don't think there's a motion necessary. It's going forward. If you've got any other questions, just give me a call or give Jeff a call, he's going to be up to speed.
Business carried forward update, update on any of the Council Goals?
Yes, Council Goals, I think you guys set that up. You've already got it on your calendar, and I don't have the exact dates, January-
23rd, I believe.
Yeah, January 23rd, I think, was your date, so I'm not going to put that on next Council Session because you've set that up.
I have another update on that-
Okay.
On the 23rd, and make sure that Natalie, I get this right. I was asked to contact LB Day and worked with Natalie and see if he could facilitate. LB Day has agreed to do that on the 23rd, and generously, once again, he's agreed to do it at no charge to the city.
Nice.
Would like to have a meeting probably three weeks prior, just so he's clear on what the agenda is.
I'm certain the new Administrator will be glad to meet with him and-
There you go.
Keep that going.
There you go.
Urban renewal map, I met with, and I'm going to mess up his last name, Paul Rogear, who is a local resident, and his son have a business and they do basically GIS for hire. I have given him a copy of our urban renewal coordinates, and he's taken them and is going to give me a quote back on creating that map. Our county does not have one, our planner at the county doesn't have one, and so the only way to do it is to take all those coordinates in the book and put them together, and then we'll go through the book and make sure all of the amendments to the plan are then updated on a step, so you can see where the first one was, and then where we added, where we added, and where we added to get to where we will be today. I further ask him for a bid to become the city's GIS department, if you will, so we can get the base maps from the water system master plan and the sewer master plan, excuse me, stormwater master plan, which already exists, overlaid on top of the county's GIS, so we would then be starting to come into the, at least 21st century, maybe not 2020, but we'll be, we'll be approaching 21st century work, and Public Works will then work from there. So, that's my update on the urban renewal map. Parks Rules, I don't have an update there.
Well, I can, if, if the Parks Board plans on taking a look at that, they're meeting in December, which I believe is the ninth, or the seventh, I'm sorry, the seventh is the first, they've moved their meetings to, the Parks has moved it to the first Monday, so it'll be the seventh.
And I'm going to, I'll take that one off of my business carried forward list here.
But I appreciate you having it on there because it reminded me I needed to do so.
No second meeting in November. Once again, want to make sure everybody heard that one unless you guys ask me to, but at this point, I haven't had that asked. Board status.
Jolene?
The Board Status is, we have a number of positions that the individuals serving terms are going to be ending, and so December will be on the agenda for appointments to those Board openings for you to vote on.
So, they will be getting applications?
We are getting applications. We have advertised it, it has been in the newsletter. We have already received applications, and we will continue to accept them until the cutoff, which is November 30th.
Will it be in, again, this month's newsletter?
Yes.
Thank you.
One last thing that's not on here, but I wanted to mention it, I just got it today in the email. We applied for an extension to our audit, as I've told you all, each, we're running behind on that due to turnover and other things. We have been granted an extension by the State Treasurer's Department until January 31st. Our audit firm thinks they can be done by then and will be on site the first week in January, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that we have done that. And with that, that's all I have for you tonight.
Any further business from the audience there, Jolene?
No.
Okay.
Whoa, somebody in the back?
Do we have a guard?
Oh, you're walking the-
Well, if you have a car, bring it out. I'm happy to take it. Thank you.
Well, you might as well just-
My name is Lori Guber, 1075 Sutton Way, and I just want to ask if we could have the leaf pickup schedule reevaluated, just doesn't seem to work for all of us in the neighborhoods. Some of us get like one pickup a month, whereas other ones get, you know, two or three or four. So, you know, just maybe, if you just, maybe sometimes somebody just, there's trees everywhere. If you live around, if you live around the city park, you got it made, you know. It just seems that, you know, like I said, there just needs to be a lot more leaves these days than our little-
Trees are getting bigger.
So, maybe, I don't know, maybe unrealistic, but just.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you. Job for a new Public Works Director.
Yeah.
Does he have anything else on his schedule?
Yeah, so, we have some of the-
Do we need to fill out another part?
For another topic?
Or, or step for, or step forward.
This is a different topic.
My name is Glenda Shear, 1525 Columbia Avenue. In thinking about the makeup of the city council, one of the rules governing that is that there cannot be two members of city council who are from the same household. I would really like for our city to extend that to the boards and the commissions, because I think that to have clean and defendable politics in our city, we need to be above, above reproach. And so, for example, we currently on the Planning Commission have a husband and wife who are on that Planning Commission. I think in my mind that that does not seem like clean and defensible workings in a city government, and I really want us to take a look at changing the rules in that circumstance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure that the Charter has any limitation on Council. I'm not aware of any.
It doesn't. I just opened it up and looked at it.
Oh, I thought, I will find that out, because I know I read that.
Please let me know. I'll be glad to look.
But we are, just as it was a few minutes ago, going to be starting a Charter Review Committee, and that could certainly be an issue that-
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to tell you fast, I promise.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me on your-
Name and address, please.
Burlington, 7000 Debbie Court, Gladstone.
Thank you.
Can you tell me on this executive session tonight, if you're talking about buying or selling? Just one word.
We can't tell you. That's why it's an executive session.
Actually, we can.
Thank you.
To tell what the executive session, it's, it's posted on the agenda, and it is about property sales, and that's an executive issue, so.
So, we're talking about selling?
We're talking about buying and selling. You don't know.
That's what I said. It's executive session.
And it's appreciated that you did.
All right. We good? All right. Business from the Council, let's start with Neil and work our way out.
Okay. So, we'd like, if possible, to have our election results in the newsletter. Back last fall, I received many comments that because of our local paper's timing, when it, when it's published and out, it usually comes on Election Day. Results don't really get out, and Gladstone isn't really, you know, real prominent, first front page news, and so if we could do that, that would be helpful. Also, I was going to ask, being that, you know, congratulations, especially to Pat, you did a lot of work on the election last- you did a lot of work on the election last, that occurred last week. Thank you. Really appreciate that. And earlier this year, we had approved a, applying for a grant, which we received from the state about upgrading our police department. So I'm thinking that we need to let them know that we're not going to be able to use that money. You know, since we're not going to be around in that building as long as they require us to be there, which was, I think, like seven to 10 years. And then, as earlier, that was brought up about on the website, the nature park. I didn't realize until, I think it was about town hall meeting, you know, when we had the town hall last month, that we had a designation or I read it somewhere, maybe prior to that, and it asked that it be removed. And I never got a reply back from that email. And I never really looked until recently and found that it hadn't been removed. So, and you mentioned earlier as to why, or it was mentioned earlier as to why it wasn't removed. So is it possible that we can get that designation removed off the website if it's? Because I mean, it can be parked, but it's also, I mean, if you look at the map, it's C2.
So it's going to take staff time to carry through all the paperwork that we can find and all the paperwork we can find on why it's designated what it is or what it should be designated.
Well, why can't we just take, well, why is it?
It can be what it actually is. It's not a designated park for the city.
Right.
It is a nature trail that was added by Metro. I guess I'm going to look for words, but I will try to craft them and get it honestly what it is. And so it's, I'll do what I can.
Okay, I'm.
What are you looking for? I mean, I.
Well, I, I'm baffled. So why can't we just remove it?
You can remove it if you want to, but I think, I mean.
Cost of war issues may not if you remove it.
This is going to get above my pay grade really quick. I think you guys are going to have to.
Well, I mean, it was brought up at the town hall meeting.
Right, it was.
And I said, well, it's Zone C2, it's not a park.
Right, and that's the truth. But you still got a nature trail designation up there and probably nature trail, and I don't know this, but my guess is nature trail has some meaning as a park.
I also think, if I recall correctly, when it was condemned, that the basis for the condemnation was used as a library and as a nature area, a natural area. So that may be part of the dispute.
Well, I understand maybe a resolution was passed, but the zoning never got changed.
Right, I'm not debating whether it's zone parkland or not. You're right, it's not. And I think just from the point of view of history, I think the reason maybe that it's called, you know, the Gladstone Natural Area or the.
Nature Park, I think, is what it's labeled.
That may just be a result of folks that were involved at the time of the condemnation and what the basis for the condemnation was.
I mean, that's just like, SDA property is mapped as Gladstone Park.
I feel, I feel a resolution coming for council to consider what goes on the website, as much as I hate to get that far down in the weeds, but I think that's where this is going to have to be.
I think that would be a good job for you as a liaison parks, that you ferret out all the past information on this and find out where the breakdown is.
Neil, C2 can be parked.
I know.
I'll second that. Okay, Pat?
Just went to the Ron Yerson Pond meeting again today and they do have clearance from the Oregon Department of State Lands and also from the Corps of Engineers to continue moving forward. They, Bobby Prouse had a meeting afterwards with us with the trustees, who are the overseers of the monies and approval and stuff. So he was going to them later today to continue working on it. So it's still moving forward.
Steve? First of all, to try and answer at least part of the question that Neil brought up. There is an IGA from Metro and Jolene was nice enough to send me a copy. Maybe we can have that copy sent out to the entire council. I think it's very informative. Library IGAs, library money from the county. I know that this is a deep topic. Where are we at with that?
We have not progressed any further than we were last council session, waiting for the vote to come through. And those IGAs are pending us moving forward with a library. So.
So do we have a chicken and egg situation here or?
We do, which I would expect we will be resolving shortly.
All right, very good. On Thursday, as you all know, Peter Janiki from Janiki Bioenergy will be here. All members of council are invited to five o'clock presentation. I would encourage you to come. I got a call out of the blue today from Peter Janiki. He was calling from Africa on his way to catch an airplane to come here to see us. So he's coming, coming quite a ways at this point. He's not going home first. He's coming to Portland. Having met him, I think Ross and I both really enjoyed listening to him talk. He knows his stuff. This guy is smart. And I'm excited that he's coming here. I'm excited he's talking to us. And I've gotten really good feedback from other council members in other cities, staff members. There's a certain amount of excitement to see this. I don't know if it is the solution, a solution, possible solution to our wastewater problems, but I think there's something that we need to look at. And I want to also thank the council for its indulgence in letting me charge ahead using, working with Ross and staff. I know that's probably not the proper way to do that, but I appreciate that from the council. Hope to see you all Thursday night.
Is that open to the public as well?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't advertised it simply because I think we have a full house. And so I didn't send out mass invites. If people have an interest in wastewater, they are encouraged to come. It might get a little dry, it might get a little technical. But in general, I want to make sure there's enough space for all the other folks.
And by the way, I did notice it as a public meeting, even though I noticed that the council will not be deliberating and no decisions will be made, but it's noticed.
Senior Center, Senior Center, yeah. Five o'clock, Thursday.
Mr. Tom?
I was at the coffee with the counselors along with Steve and Pat and it was, it was an interesting group, positive group. But they were asking a lot of questions. Their understanding it was the vote was passed and boy, we could, we can in fact do things now, such as library, which has already been passed, Infinity Hall and the police station. And it was kind of in a mode, however, well, we had the library passed last year and we still haven't done anything yet. You know, are we going to get things going? And I think that between Pat and Steve and I, we mentioned that in a positive mode that we were going to move ahead quite rapidly. But we, I at least eroded that we wanted to do things in the right way. So it may take a little while to make some decisions, but it was a positive group. It was, it was a bigger group than.
I was going to ask, how many?
There was, I think, seven or eight, which is.
Eleven of us total. The kind of counselors are eleven of us.
Well, yeah, seven to eight besides the counselors, so.
Off for me. Tim?
I did have a meeting, well, it was an impromptu, just happened to meet up with Paul Sawis. He wanted to congratulate us on the passing of the ballot measures. And he said, what is it that we can do to help you move, get this going? And my response to him was, we've got some IGAs that need to get through the steps. And so you might have your staff look, take a look for those and see what we need to do to get those going. I met with him at the Veterans Breakfast and Parade, but I don't want to steal Dominic's thunder, beans, he always has to go last and everybody tells on him already, so.
Oh, that's all I got.
I'm just trying to be very much all.
I only have two things, Gladstone Education Foundation Dinner and Auction. They approached me and asked if we were interested in attending. We haven't attended in a while as a city. It's $40 a head. You can get a table of eight for 320 bucks. I don't know where or when. I just wanted to throw it out there. If any, but if you guys are interested, if it's something we want to do or if you just want to just handle it on an individual basis rather than getting a whole table, that's fine. Just, you know, something to throw out there. They were requesting us appear, make an appearance. And then the only other thing is I went to the Lake Oswego Tiger Pump Station Ceremony ribbon cutting thing, said a few words and at the end, they presented us with a $2,500, not a cardboard check, kind of a plastic deal. $2,500 towards the senior center, specifically to go to senior center. I brought it down and Ross and I and Jolene gave it to Rhonda and she was appreciative. So she'll follow through and use it for what she needs at the senior center, so. And that is all I have. Thank you, folks, for your patience. Thanks for coming out tonight and this meeting is.
We adjourn to executive session.
I was just going to say that. I'm adjourning this meeting and we're going into executive session. Thank you for coming.